Yes. All righty. Good morning, Commissioners, and over to you, Chair Harrington.
I'm Kathryn. Good morning, everyone, and welcome. We are all, ah, great. We've all moved our camera lens over, so we are set this very fine Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. Today is a very special day. This is the last Washington County Board of Commissioners' business meeting for our longtime Commissioner Roy Rogers. And we will all get to celebrate him later in today's agenda. So now I'm getting a little ahead of myself, and I first need to turn it over to Board Clerk Moss.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county services. This is now meeting this regular session, December 17th, 2024. Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner Willey?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Vice Chair Fai?
Present.
Chair Harrington?
Here. Thank you, Clerk Moss. So we have just a couple of agenda updates. Item C-15 is moving to a new action section on the agenda. So after Boards and Commissions, we will have actions with the adoption of the resolution and order for the Washington County bilingual pay policy. Commissioner Fai has some questions. Then, after that, we'll have our two presentations. C-17 was added to the consent agenda, so our consent agenda has 15 items. And Item E-2 had some updates from when the packet was first published. So that's the essence of our agenda for today. So let's jump into it. Clerk Moss, public communication. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and share their thoughts with us for up to two minutes, an individual, 10 minutes total. Do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We are getting that right now. I did not see anyone sign up at the beginning. Would any member in the auditorium wish to provide comment for two minutes on any county-related topic? If you just move to raise your hands, they're coming forward. Not seeing in the room. Would anyone on Zoom wish to provide public comment on any county-related topic? If you just move to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we're on to today's consent agenda with 15 items, including two sets of minutes, three items from Clean Water Services, one item from the Office of Community Development, one item from Housing Services, four items from Land Use and Transportation, and two items from Human Resources, and one item combo. Oops, sorry. And the three items from Human Resources. That's all 15. Move to approve.
I'll second it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. The consent agenda has been moved for adoption and seconded as well. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll move on to Boards and Commissions. Here, we have the opportunity to appoint some new members to the Washington County Local Public Safety Coordinating Council. And they would be appointing Alan Pericini to the PSCC and Rachel Shutz as well, both to be appointed to, oh, excuse me, Rachel Shutz to serve a second term starting January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2026. And for Alan, it would be, I believe, his first term, but the same time period. This will leave one position vacant, which the committee does recommend to us for an upcoming recruitment. The committee is asking us to leave this open because they would like to recruit someone with lived experience with an emphasis on victims and survivors as identified as a policy area in the PSCC bylaws. So that's the recommendation for those two members. What are the wishes of the Board?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Next, we're going to move on to a potential action item to adopt the resolution and order for the Washington County bilingual pay policy. This item is, was Item C-15 in our packet. Commissioner Fai has some questions. So Ms. Fai, could you please, Commissioner Fai, could you please share those with us?
Thank you, Chair. Lisa Anand, thank you for joining us this morning. On December 10th, we, the Board, had a robust discussion around this topic, and there were a lot of questions that came from that discussion. And I won't sit here to take credit. This question was actually raised by Commissioner Roy Rogers around the American Sign Language and how that is incorporated into the policy. And since then, it's my understanding that you've made some revisions. Could you speak to that revision that you've made to the policy and clarify the addition of American Sign Language and how the policy fits in?
Turn it over to Lisa for a moment. Ann Ober, I'm an A.C.A. here at the county.
Yes, thank you. Lisa Tackich, Chief Human Resources Officer for Washington County. Good morning, and thank you, Commissioner Fai, for the follow-up and the question. And upon further review of the policy and consultation with OEICE, we have determined that any language, including American Sign Language, is eligible for the bilingual pay compensation if it meets the eligibility requirements in the policy, including the 20% threshold for the amount of work that the employee would perform.
We've updated that in the slide deck. And then it's also, there is not a list currently in the policy, so it wasn't added, but it is considered to be included.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Wonderful. And I did just want to thank the team for doing this. It took a lot of work. Ashley was a huge instrumental partner in making it happen. So thank you to OEIC and their leadership.
Thank you.
I will add to that appreciation because Ashley Horn helped ensure that we had great engagement across our employee set of all the different departments. Over 2,700 employees make up our work team and really appreciate the employees contributing their thoughts so that we could have a much improved bilingual pay policy here. So what are the wishes of the Board for adopting the resolution and order for adopting the Washington County bilingual pay policy? Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Next, we'll move on to presentations. The first will come from our independently elected auditor. So I would ask her and her staff, as appropriate, to please come up to the witness table. And welcome. Turn it over to you.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Thank you so much for having us. For the record, my name is Christine Adams-Wanberg. I am the county auditor. I am joined with Sheri Kirk, Senior Management Auditor, who is in charge of this audit. But before we get into the audit, I do want to extend a congratulations to Commissioner Rogers. Thank you so much for your very long service. Really appreciate it, and I hope that whatever your next adventure is, it is a glorious one. So we are here today to provide a presentation of our audit report, the American Rescue Plan Act Workforce Development Grant: Lessons Learned Show That the County Needs to Improve Accountability of Results and Spending. So just as a preview of coming attractions for this, we are going to provide some information about the audit background, the scope and objectives. We'll give you the findings and recommendations. We will provide management with a brief opportunity to respond to the recommendations if they wish to do that. And then, of course, if we have any questions, under 20 minutes, because Kevin says we have to book it, we will, we will take those questions. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Sheri.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. A little bit about the background of this audit. We selected the audit because Washington County residents inquired about the ARPA funding, specifically workforce development. Because of this, the county auditor added the project to the 2023 audit plan. The audit looked at how workforce development was administering and overseeing the ARPA grant and the community partners' contract. We met with each community partner on premise. Each partner welcomed us with open and engaging conversation about their programs. We talked to them about their program and financial processes. We requested various documents to support what they were doing, such as policies and procedures, eligibility, contracted activities, monitoring, and financial information. We also requested, obtained, and reviewed varying amounts of partner program data. We did encounter a couple of limitations. First, we had two community partners who did not provide the requested financial documentation until after the close of fieldwork. And our second, we had some partners who did not provide the requested program data or limited the data, which caused delays in the audit work. We had two objectives. First of all, did the county achieve their goals? And the second was, were the activities and costs allowable? In our first finding, what we found was the county lacked policies and procedures, leaving staff without key resources. We recognized that the county was under a tremendous amount of pressure to get the federal ARPA funds out into the community and to get its residents back to work. Workforce development was a new program with new staff. The new manager was to build this program from the ground up. In addition, they were given the responsibility of administering this portion of the federal grant. What we found was the county did not have grant administration policies and procedures that they needed in order to implement the ARPA grant. We also found the administrative policy 403 for contract administrators was not up to date, and the procedures were not available. There was no oversight to ensure training was available and completed. Policies and procedures are very important because they are the high-level foundational documents that are going to reflect the county's tone and objectives. They are needed to provide management and staff with the guidance and direction to perform their jobs. Our second finding found that the contracts were insufficiently developed to ensure program accountability. Each contract was delayed anywhere from 123 to 277 days. Eight of the nine partners started working long before the contracts were complete. This caused financial struggles for some community partners, and during those delays, the county had no legal assurance that the work performed aligned with the county goals and federal compliance requirements. Next, the ARPA framework, approved by yourselves, the Board of Commissioners had three goals: One, ensure adequate capacity in the workforce development system, assist workers with finding jobs, and for private industry to find workers. The intended beneficiary was unemployed and low-income workers. However, the request for expression of interest expanded these beneficiaries, and the contract reporting focused on unvalidated aggregated data. We found federal regulations required the county to evaluate the risk of the community partners not complying with the grant and to determine the level of monitoring required. For each community partner, the risk assessment score resulted in monitoring limited to the contract reporting. We found the risk assessment had no methodology or explanation for how scores were to be assigned. We found scores that did not reflect the actual risk. For example, financial and program policies were considered adequate in the assessment, but what we found was they were not adequate, and most did not have any program procedures. Next, federal compliance and reporting require documentation to support beneficiary eligibility. None of the contracts had this requirement, and as a result, the majority of the partners relied on beneficiary self-attestation. Our third finding found not all community partners were prepared to take on the federal compliance requirements. Monitoring and data reliability gives the county assurance that the work being performed and the results provided achieve the intended goals. When the county passes the federal funds to another organization, this is going to create a subaward. And what this means is, is that the organization receiving the fund takes on the responsibilities and the restrictions. For example, eligibility, performance measurement, ensuring program data is reliable and that the program is in line with the grant requirements. However, this still means the county is responsible for oversight and monitoring. We found not all of the partners had the tools, knowledge, and resources to take on the compliance requirements. And because county monitoring was limited to the aggregated reporting, we found this data was not validated, leaving the county with no assurance that the program goals were achieved. For example, when we looked at the data, we found duplicate beneficiaries, non-residents, beneficiaries whose household income well exceeded the allowable thresholds, working beneficiaries' income that was well above the allowable amounts. And our final finding, finding number four, we found the internal financial controls insufficient to give assurance that the grant activities and costs were allowable. It's important to have good financial controls because it makes sure that the money spent follows not only the county but also compliance requirements. We found the contract financial reporting requirements for each partner extremely limited. This was a general ledger and a report template. No other documentation was required unless the county requested additional support. Examples of sufficient documentation would be a detailed payroll with all deductions and the accompanying timesheets. A second example is if the partner made a payment for approved budget line item, such as tuition or school supplies. I would expect to see, at the minimum, the beneficiary's case plan, the invoice from the billing company, and support of the community partner payment for the beneficiary of the program. Finally, we found the program incorrectly applying indirect cost rate on community partner monthly claims. While we agree that technically the program followed compliance requirements, we also saw this same error with other partners. Audit recommendations. We made a total of 10 recommendations to address each of the findings. For the first findings, develop county-wide grant procedures. Update Policy 403 and develop supporting county-wide procedures. Develop a process to ensure contract administration training is completed. For finding two, we are recommending aligning new and modified contracts with board direction in the ARPA framework in addition to federal compliance. Develop a new grant risk assessment tool. And third, require documentation in contracts to evidence how beneficiaries are eligible. For finding three, we recommend developing a grant monitoring plan and establish, document, and implement processes to collect and verify program data. Our final finding recommendations are improve the internal controls over financial and program activities. And our last one is review and monitor indirect costs. And with that, I will turn it over to the CAO's office.
Hello, Ms. Angie. We do have your memo that is part of the report, but if you would like to present that information now, please do so.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. And thank you to the auditor's office. And Clerk Moss has updated the packet to ensure the packet does reflect the management response as well as part of the permanent record. So I do appreciate the auditor's office' work on this. I do want to actually read some excerpts from the management response so that it is on the public record. "In 2020, COVID-19 swept across the world with devastating impacts. In response, governments jumped into action, trying to stem the impacts on both people's health and the world economy. As part of this response, the United States federal government passed multiple financial packages to support communities in crisis." I want to underscore that again, "in crisis." This report addresses one of those funding sources, ARPA, and the disbursement of a limited number of these funds to support small businesses and workers affected by the pandemic. Recommendation one: Develop county-wide grant procedures. Recommendation was that the county administrator through the Finance Department should create, document, and implement county-wide grant procedures. The county does agree with this, and as your board knows, I have been having conversations over, since multiple years, I think actually since the first year I started, of the need to look at our grant process here at the county. So I was not surprised by this being a recommendation coming forward. I want to go back to my opening comments. Keep in mind, these ARPA funds were one-time, and we were still in the midst of responding to the global-wide pandemic and a crisis. Recommendation 1-2: Update Policy 403 and develop supporting county-wide procedures. The county administrator through the Finance Department should update contract administration Policy 403 and assign oversight for the policy. The department should develop procedures and support the policy. Management does agree with this. As your board is also aware, we are working through financial and budget transformation, which includes updating our financial policies. And so that includes removing existing policy or updating policies accordingly. Recommendation 1-3: Develop a process to ensure contract administration training is completed. We agree in that the county will develop compliance oversight on required training for contract administration. That also aligns with that policy revision and development work. Recommendation 2-1: Align new and modified contracts with board direction in the ARPA framework in addition to federal compliance. The county administrator through the Act Dev program should align new or modified grant contracts with board direction in the ARPA framework. This is in addition to federal compliance requirements. We do agree in that, and the county believes that it's actually aligned, grant contracts to the ARPA framework. Should there be new or modified grant contracts, the county will again review the contracts against the ARPA framework. Recommendation 2-2: Develop a new grant risk assessment tool. The county administrator does agree with this and has a target date of 18 to 24 months. This also aligns with the development of grant policies and procedures and through a new staffing resource. I want to underscore this new staffing resource is utilizing limited-duration funds. We do not have a permanent funding source for grants administration. That does coincide with the conversation your county administrator has been having with your board, that, yes, we do need to look at grants administration, and we need to have the resources to be able to do so. Recommendation 2-3: Require documentation on how beneficiaries are eligible. We do agree with that recommendation. And I do just want to underscore with this, the county does not expect to have further grants using ARPA funds that would need to meet this requirement. Recommendation 3-1: Develop a grant monitoring plan. This is the recommendation, the county administrator through the Act Dev program should create, document, and implement a monitoring plan that gives assurance that the contracted deliverables are achieved. We do agree with conditions. The county's economic development program will improve the monitoring plan with consistent and timely application to all recipients through the implementation of improved internal controls, resulting in increased assurance that the program deliverables are achieved. The program will adhere to county-wide grant management policies, processes, and procedures that are to be developed and implemented through the Finance Department. Outcomes associated with these projects will be included in your ARPA reporting that you will receive as well as our reporting to the federal government. Recommendation 3-2: Establish, document, and implement processes to collect and verify program data. We do agree with this as well with some conditions. The county agrees that processes to collect and verify programmatic data should be in place. The economic development program will adhere to county-wide grant management policies, processes, and procedures that are to be developed and implemented through Finance Department, including verification specs. I hope you hear a theme of "to be developed" policies and procedures, and through our financial, Finance Department, so that we are truly, at the end of the day, using a grants administration approach that aligns with our One Washington County culture. Recommendation 4-point dash, excuse me, 4-1: Improving internal controls over financial programs and activities. We do agree, and our response here is economic development will work with finance to determine additional controls for financial and program activities. Recommendation 4-2: Review and monitor indirect costs. We do disagree with this recommendation. Our response, the county has approved and questioned indirect costs based on the federally negotiated indirect rate letter from the subrecipient, and followed all appropriate regulations and guidance to resolve the question cost in compliance with 2 CFR, 200 uniform administrative requirements, while that's a mouthful, cost principles, and audit requirements for federal awards. The county will amend its processes should we reserve further guidelines from federal agencies. And with that, that concludes the management's response. If there's any further questions, I am available, as well as Ann Ober, Assistant County Administrator.
And this concludes our presentation. So we'd like to open up the floor for any questions Kevin allows in the book at time.
Commissioners, you wish to ask any questions or make any comments?
Yeah, I would. Well, Roy, you're the auditor on the commission here, so you want to go ahead, and then I'll follow up. Thank you. Thank you for your work, and I understand it was focused on ARPA funds, but we all understand that federal funds are federal funds under A133, and you have the same circulars and the same sorts of audit requirements. Are you going to, I have a couple of questions. The first one, are you going to expand to cover other kinds of non-ARPA-related federal funding monies?
That's not my intent at this time.
Not at this time? Okay. I'm surprised, but okay. Number two, you're sharing your results, I presume, with the auditor, the financial auditor for the county?
Yes, I have.
And this will put us in a little different category. For the next year, we're going to be a high-risk auditor T instead of a low-risk auditor T when you start having findings like this. And they're aware of that, and are you having any follow-up with that, or have they suggested any follow-up with that?
Commissioner, they haven't suggested any follow-up at this time. I have communicated with them as to what the audit findings were. I've given them a copy of the audit. I've invited them to have a conversation with me if they have questions. At this time, they have not.
Okay. I know there's one qualm, and I won't ask any more questions, but this is a sort of nerdy thing. of nerdy things we all do. I do it too, and...
I love these nerdy things, Commissioner.
I know.
I live for these.
But it's very complex, and it's very serious, these kinds of issues. And so the comments shouldn't be taken lightly. I hear our staff is not, and so I appreciate the information.
No problem.
Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
All right, yeah, thank you. So first, I think what I want to say is thank you, Tanya and Ann, for the response on here that we got. I think it's very important when we have audits and we have audit findings that it's very important that we respond to those. And so thank you for your response here. I always like to hear the counter-thoughts on this as well. And Christine, you and your department have done a great job on a variety of things. It's always good to kind of, I guess, look a little bit closer to some of the things. But I like to hear pros and cons. And so as auditors typically do, they only look at what you didn't do right, what flaws there were in the system, and everything else. I'd kind of like to hear some good things, because I remember when we first got this ARPA money, and we'd just come out of 50-some million dollars of CARES money, and so we were all hands on deck, full-on, trying to get this money out into the hands and to help our constituents and businesses. So what good things did we do right? And I guess I'm not, you don't have to necessarily off the top of your head do this, but I would like to know...
I can totally do that off the top of my head, Commissioner.
Okay.
All right, so I...
Please give us some good news, will you?
Yeah, I want to tell you that I believe that the staff in the ARPA program were incredibly dedicated to this function, both the Economic Development Program as well as the ARPA Economic Development, the Workforce Development Program. They worked long, they worked hard, they tried their best to do a really good job of essentially pulling, trying to pull a rabbit out of the hat under some incredibly strenuous and difficult circumstances. I think we, I could say we genuinely felt their pain when we found that they just didn't have the resources available of what they really, really needed. So even with the findings in this report, I don't want you to look at it and to say, "Well, staff just were really screwing around." They were not. They were doing a very diligent job to try to find, you know, figure out the rules, to try to work with the community partners, but they just did not have the capacity. They didn't have the tools there. And I think that's, that was one of the frustrating things that we saw, was, you know, dedicated staff really trying to do good work for community partners, for our hurting community, for their board, and they just didn't have the infrastructure in place that they needed.
Great, that's a good response. Thank you very much, and thank you to the staff for the hard work that they have done through this entire ARPA program. We're still not done. We've got through 26, but thank you for everybody for doing that, and thanks for those positive comments.
So I'll make some closing comments. I very much appreciate that here at Washington County, we are a learning culture, or we have a learning culture as part of our One Washington County. And specific program audits like this do help us learn from other perspectives. This one, just a reminder, is not on all aspects of our ARPA program, but the workforce development piece. And so should we have the opportunity of future grant programs, this board is known, at least since early 2020 with the coronavirus relief funds, that was, I think, 114 million that we had to get out of the door by the end of 2020, later amended. Anyway, a lot of heavy lifting by this organization when policies, practices, procedures haven't necessarily been up to the challenge of the programs that we have thrown at staff to implement on behalf of our community. Nonetheless, we do have these learnings, and I appreciate management's dedication in following up with that. The last comment I have is, at least for the next time, I would suggest that either through the course of your audit topic worksheet, the presentation, or the, well, or the presentation, it would be very helpful to members of our community if you provide either directions or a link to the actual audit document. That was not part of this packet. Of course, I found it, but I think for our community, that is a missing piece.
That is an excellent piece of advice. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we'll move on to our second presentation of today's meeting. And I'm going to kick things off. What did we skip? No, we're not going to skip it. Uh-uh. No, no, no. So Commissioner Rogers has been the District Three Commissioner. Well, we're recognizing 40 years of service in that capacity. So first, I would like to call up a few staff members to help us, board members, to honor Commissioner Roy Rogers for his extensive service. They include Joe Gall on behalf of our Clean Water Services CEO, Diane Taniguchi-Dennis, Stephen Roberts, our Director of Land Use and Transportation, Lisa Tattersall, our really excellent manager for the Washington County Community Library Cooperative, and of course, Philip Brandsford. If you could all just take a seat at the table, and I'm going to start things off and make some remarks. After that, I would like to turn it over to my colleagues to share your remarks. Then we have, on behalf of our colleagues here, some presenters to share their thought. And so we can, we might be joining you down here as you make that, so. So without further ado, let me highlight that this is a very special occasion. It isn't very often that you get to recognize someone's four decades of service on a county commission, and he was an elected public servant before that as well. So you're coming to an end of a very special 40-year career here, and we want to take some time to highlight some of the milestones along your journey.
Time's up.
No, time is not up. Just getting warmed up here, Commissioner Rogers. Before you were a commissioner, you were the mayor of Toowalatin. You have also been president of the Oregon Mayors Association, and you have served on many different committees, state level and regional level, including the Joint Policy Advisory Committee, known as J-PACT, the League of Oregon Cities Committees, and the Washington County Coordinating Committee. In addition to serving as the District Three Commissioner here at Washington County, you've also served as a director on the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services. And along the way, there were quite a few programs that were created that have benefited our community. Central to that was your serving in negotiations to create the Strategic Investment Program, what we refer to as SIP, and the various agreements with both Intel Corporation and Genentech, which allowed for drawing of jobs and investments here into Washington County. We can also thank you, Commissioner Rogers, in part, for the reason why we have Bridgeport Village in Toowalatin. You were instrumental in the decision-making to reclaim that abandoned quarry and help see it transform into the thriving shopping center that many of us enjoy. Additionally, your leadership on J-PACT involved many visits to Washington, D.C., advocating for federal funding, which has helped our region advance numerous transportation solutions. Transportation really has been an integral part of your service as a commissioner. You've always championed a better system, not only in District Three, not only in Washington County, but throughout the state of Oregon, as we help contribute to the economy of our state. But beyond just District Three, you spearheaded the creation of the Major Streets Transportation Improvement Funding Program from its inception, culminating in voter adoption in 1986. And we have that program still today to help improve our travel options throughout our community. Your influence has touched many aspects beyond transportation, including the creation of our current 25-year-old jail, that is a countywide jail, this public services building, as well as the New Home for Clean Water Services. This work has resulted in several recognitions, including from the Toowalatin Chamber Public Service Award, the Washington County Chamber of Commerce Legacy Award, the Ernie Platt Award from the Home Builders Association, and Tigard's First Citizen Award from the Tigard Chamber in 1997. Finally, in 2024, this year, the National Association of Clean Water Agencies presented you, Commissioner Rogers, with the National Environmental Advocate Award for your services on the Clean Water Services Board. Thank you so much for your incredible community services, helping ensure that both of our agencies continue to lean into innovation and future thinking. It's, it's been a pleasure to serve with you, as I've been here, the chair, for these last six years. And I would like to turn the table over to my fellow colleagues to see if you would like to make some comments honoring our colleague, Roy Rogers. Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
Nobody's got anywhere to go, right?
How do you sum up 40 years of service?
It's impossible. And I just want to express my appreciation for the work that I've had the opportunity to do with you. And what maybe not everybody understands is the amount of work, and I'm just taking a small segment, that Roy has put into workforce development. I had the honor of serving with Commissioner Rogers on the board and the Executive Board of Work Systems Inc. How many, how many years have you been on that board?
Ten.
Ten years. That's a long, that's a very long time. And during that time, I had the privilege to go to D.C. with him, to see him in action, advocating for our workforce development dollars for this region, speaking eloquently with our senators and our congresspeople. There is so much more to Commissioner Rogers than we see in evidence in meetings like this. So I want to say thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your, your ongoing 40-plus years of commitment to public service. And that is, to me, that's the heart of the issue here, is that, is that North Star for you has always been public service. And this community benefits in such a great way from that commitment, Roy. Thank you.
Commissioner Fai or Commissioner Willie?
Commissioner Willie, you want to go first?
Commissioner Roy Rogers, Mr. Rogers, congratulations on your well-deserved retirement from the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for your service, for your decades of leadership, wisdom, and most certainly public service. You've made a difference, and we are all better for it. I'm honored to be one of your colleagues today, as we celebrate your incredible legacy as Roy Rogers, Commissioner Roy Rogers. After 40 years of dedicated services to this county, Commissioner Rogers, you're not just a colleague to so many people in this county, you are also a cornerstone of our community's progress. Commissioner Roy Rogers, your legacy will live on, live on in the roads, literally, right? The roads we drive, but also I want to make a comment to say that also in the neighborhoods that we build and the trust you've cultivated in our community. You leave us with just not your achievements, as Chair Harrington listed, but also with a standard of excellence and integrity that will inspire, that will inspire us for many years to come. I just want to end to say, good luck in your next chapter. You've more than certainly earned it, Commissioner Roy Rogers. And as we celebrate today, we will miss you here, but you are invited to come every Tuesday, to come and testify, and perhaps we'll make a consideration to speak to you twice, both the beginning of the board sessions and the ending. We'll make an exception if, if the Presiding Officer, Chair Harrington, allows it. But you're more than welcome to be invited, at least to come speak for the first two minutes and stay the whole board meeting.
I'm not going to support that, Roy, so you can... Chair will have to, Chair will have to overrule that, but...
I think he has better things to do on his Tuesdays.
I think so, too. Yeah, it'll be Tuesdays that he has now open on his calendar, so, yeah, you get some production hours in for that, your accounting firm, so. Roy, you and I go back a long time, well before I jumped into the political scene, certainly as one of, one of our firm's competitors, of course, but certainly friends as well. We, we've known each other a long time in that professional environment, and certainly I've enjoyed certainly the, the wisdom and the challenges that you always provide, the different perspectives. So I appreciate that, and I will certainly miss you on this board from the standpoint of being able to talk about what bean counters talk about and talk about all the numbers. But I really do appreciate the 40 years you put in, plus the years as Bean Mayor. You know, we start in these, in these endeavors, these career-altering things, not with the intent of creating a legacy or a name, but just to be a part of the community, to have some input on important decisions and some perspective and vision that I think each one of our constituents expect of us. And so you have certainly done that in spades, Roy, for the last 40 years. You've always had a, the ability to kind of look out on the horizon and, and see what needs to be done, maybe see some changes that need to be done, and, and certainly, from my standpoint, give me a different perspective on some things. So I just want to say thank you. I don't expect to see you go away. I know that you're still going to be working in the accounting business for a while, and so you've got other things to do. But thank you very much for your time in Washington County, and certainly for the things that you've done and given us. So, thanks.
What will the Audit Committee meetings ever be like? We won't have anyone else who can speak to Gatsby and changes to Gatsby, unless, of course, we can convince Commissioner Willie to serve in that capacity. Really, the Audit Committee is pretty interesting, folks. You learn new things. So colleagues, could you please, and this includes Commissioner Rogers, could we please go on the floor and continue with the appreciation to you, Commissioner Roy Rogers? No, we're getting there, wherever closer. No, we're getting there wherever closer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And with your permission, I'll try to assemble us here. If the board could join us right over here?
You get to be center.
And staff. Commissioner, would you mind joining your board members right over here? Thank you. We just have, yes, we want you front and center, and we have, well, we all are in a way, because he's the longest-serving county commissioner in the state of Oregon. And we are so thankful for you. We can't help ourselves. We have to bestow some tokens of our esteem. And so with that, I'm going to ask our county administrator to help us with the first of those.
Thank you, Phillip. So, Roy, we had a great conversation yesterday. Leading up to this day today, Roy was very clear. I don't want anything. And that means, and we had a great conversation, and he credited the work of staff, and I really appreciate that, because I've heard that from you and your fellow colleague, just the great work staff do. But we are all standing on your shoulders, as well as the shoulders of other commissioners that have been here before. And so would like to gift you with, on behalf of the commission in Washington County, a flag. And just thank you for your service and the footprints and marks that you have made here in Washington County, as well as, there's an excerpt from State of the County as well. Well, in 10 days, you're still a commissioner, so we can re-gift it to you in January then. So just on behalf of all employees, I will also say we are limited by time, so we do have some Washington County staff who will be also gifting you, but that is not a reflection of all the departments and offices here in the county. And so there are many who, some who are sitting in the office representing those departments, but we kind of had to keep this scale down to size. So please know that all of our workforce is here celebrating you and your contributions, Roy.
Well, Commissioner, speaking personally, I'm definitely going to miss seeing you every Tuesday. I have an idea for a book, Tuesdays with Roy, I think would be appropriate. It might be multi-volume, multiple volumes. But on behalf of Land Use and Transportation, I really do want to just thank you again for your years of service. You've really been a stalwart champion of the work that we do in our department, and there are a few members of our leadership team here. We have a couple who couldn't make it today. Yeah, and so we wanted to gift you with this, and we don't have it here with us today, but we actually got you a sign off of Roy Rogers Road that has been in service for a number of years and was due to be replaced. And so we pulled it down and shared that with you, and it's sort of the closest thing we could do on LUT to a flag that flew over the Capitol. So that was a little gift to you, and just as a friend, and really appreciate your mentorship over the years. So thanks so much.
On the backside of that, it says Roy Rogers, wait on the back. Commissioner Rogers, on behalf of all of the libraries in Washington County, we want to thank you for your deep unwavering commitment to our unique form of library service here and the community partnerships that you have fostered so strongly and that benefit all of our residents in our very longstanding library system. No, but I will tell you, because the reason I'm doing this today is because every time I saw you, you asked me for a library card to replace the one you lost with a very low number on it, the original. We couldn't do that, but we were able, and I'm not going to show it because it's an actual working library card number, so I'm not going to show it on the camera. But it is the lowest number we could find, and it ends in, oh, I won't say what it ends in either, because I can't say that on the record, because it's a working library card number. But it is the lowest number we could come up with to honor your many years of support for our system, and we thank you very much.
One million is not very low.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers, we're going to switch gears now, switch agencies for a second. So many in this room primarily know you as Commissioner Rogers, but for those of us at Clean Water Services, you're Director Rogers. You've served on the CWS Board of Directors since 1985. Your visionary leadership has directly improved the quality and health of the Tuolotin River watershed and beyond, which is why, as Chair Harrington mentioned earlier, this year the National Association of Clean Water Agencies presented you with the National Environmental Achievement Award for your service on the Clean Water Services Board of Directors. Throughout your 40 years as a Washington County Commissioner and Clean Water Services Board Member, Commissioner Rogers, Director Rogers, has built a reputation as an innovator. You have continuously challenged Clean Water Services to operate as a business while delivering the best value to ratepayers and optimizing benefits to the greater water environment. Over the years, Director Rogers has provided leadership and support to Clean Water Services on a number of firsts, including, oh, halfway done, Roy. Hang in there. Our first-of-its-kind Integrated Watershed Municipal National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, that's a mouthful, changing Unified Sewerage Agency's name to Clean Water Services in 2001 to better reflect the organization's role in watershed health, trading water-quality credits from agriculture to offset the water temperature impacts of urban wastewater treatment, building North America's first commercial struvite recovery facility to produce crystal-green fertilizer, establishing the nonprofit Clean Water Institute in 2010, which greatly broadened the reach of funding, research, and innovation for water-quality achievements, and then finally establishing our own insurance company, Clean Water Insurance Company, in 2016 to help us manage the unique risks our business faces now and in the future, while saving costs for our operations and our customers. These achievements and more would not have been possible without Director Roy Rogers. And the Tuolotin River watershed would not be the livable community it is today without your leadership, support, and ingenuity. On behalf of Clean Water Services and their staff, I want to thank you for all your dedicated service. Just a little token of our appreciation.
And I know we're pressed for time, but should we allow him to say anything at all? All right, let's give the floor to you, sir.
Oh, man. Well, I don't have any prepared remarks, and I don't have them in front of me. Both Commissioner Treese and Commissioner Fi said you should write something down, but what do you say after 40 years other than thank you? Thank you. I used to quip, I said, when I pass out of this world and die, I hope to get to speak at my own funeral. I think this is probably as close as I'm going to come to doing it. It's an interesting day. What's really important to me, having served during a very unique period of time, for most of you who just see somebody up here saying, well, that guy's been around forever, I came here as a very young person. I'm not leaving as a very young person, but I came here as a very young person. And during my tenure, this whole county complexion changed. We were an agricultural county, forestry, resource-oriented. And look at it now. I mean, we're high-tech capital of Oregon, maybe the world in many respects. I met the building across the way. You now call that the courthouse. We were up on the fourth floor. That's where the jail was as well. So I was in a unique position to, let's see, this building built, I was here when we broke ground. Wall Street was not around. We had a facility out on River Road, I don't know if you knew that, Stephen. There was no Clean Water Building. This was a co-op, if you didn't know. City of Hillsborough was located here. Clean Water Service was located here, as well as the county facility. So you can't imagine all of those groups being in this building, but they were. There was no jail, as we now know it, it was over there. There was no Harkins House. There was none of the buildings that you see out. And Clean Water Service was a sleepy little organization, a sewage agency, and now it's a world-class, world-class entity. And so I really credit all this to a lot of people. There's no I in any of this, it's all we. I just happen to have the good fortune of being here when it got done, that's all. I just served long enough. There are many commissioners who are not around anymore that I served with, wonderful people who added, you know, a lot to this organization and what they did. They had their right ideas about how to go about it, their service, their mantra. Fortunately, they're not of this world anymore, but I know they might be looking down, saying they were pleased for the roles that they played. I worked with four county administrators, five if you got the interim, and Diane, only three administrators on the Clean Water Service side, a tremendous number of staff people. And frankly, I want to not just talk to the department heads and the other folks, but I've always said to some of the most important people in the organization are those who greet people, who clean our facilities, and do all of the things that need to be done. They're the real heroes, and frankly, the staff is the real heroes. We get to go out and give speeches, and we get to cut ribbons, you know, we get to do some fun things. But without their innovation, their hard work, without them, nothing would be done around here. And so I've been really honored to serve with so many fine, fine people over the years. They've just been an incredible array. So I'm the blessed one. I'm the lucky one. I just happened to live a long time, and been fortunate enough to serve with all of those folks. And to my colleagues today, thank you for your kind remarks. Just remember that in 10 or 15 or 20 years, people are going to be standing on your shoulders. So I appreciate what I've heard from each one of you about your interest in doing what's right, not a legacy for you, because there's no legacy in this for any of us. I can assure you, none of you are going to remember anything I said 20 minutes from now, maybe, let alone 10 years from now. And none of you are going to remember any of this 30 years from now. But what is going to be remembered is what you all do. So please do everything that you're going to do with humility and grace. Understand that it's not about any of us, it's about them, and it's about the constituents. So my final thank yous are, thank you to the voting public who had, I guess, gave me the great honor of being elected 10 times, it's hard to believe, four more if you go back to Tuolotin days. It's a lot of years of public trust. I would remiss if I didn't thank my wife. None of us stand here by ourselves. I mean, can you imagine, we're 2,000 meetings out here, not counting other meetings on top of these that we have, you know, and that's coming out in the rain like today, or in the snow, or in the summer. It's a lot of sacrifice, a lot of family sacrifice, because I was trying to run a business this entire time, too. So my wife, she's been great, she gets, I'll give her everything. She's really the one who earns it. To my colleagues, thank you for all you've taught me. Each one of you has brought something to me. To all of you, thank you for everything you've done. You've been just great for my inner self and good feeling, and I've said enough, other than goodbye, this is not final. We'll see each other maybe somewhere at some time. Keep on doing the right thing, that's what's important.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you have time for a photo? Okay. So with that, if anyone would like to join us in a photo, may we be well-positioned to get a wide shot of anyone that would like to join us up here, and then we'll turn things right over.
We're still in our public meeting, and we still have one more public communication session. Our mics aren't working, though. The mic lights aren't working, but people can hear me. I'm holding the button down. So next, we have the opportunity of our second public comment period of today's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and address the board for up to five minutes, an individual 30 minutes maximum. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. We have Trish.
Trish.
Trish, would you like to come up to the table and address us? Thank you.
Hi there, thank you so much. My name is Trish Raby.
There you go.
Sorry about that. My name is Trish Raby. I'm with Raby Family Dentistry. I'm also here basically representing the businesses in the local area. And congratulations, Commissioner Rogers, that's a wonderful achievement, way to go. Very happy for you. And thank you all for taking the time to listen to me today. The local businesses have gotten together lately. We have been affected by the decision of Washington County and the city of Hillsborough with the Project Homeless Connect decision. In the last three years, we have tried to be good neighbors with Project Homeless Connect, and it has not come to fruition. We come in on a daily basis to feces on our properties, trash everywhere. Our staff and our customers or patrons, patients in our example, do not feel safe. It has been very frustrating for the businesses involved, for our staffs, patients. We have been getting together.
Am I talking? I'm talking. The mic lights aren't working, but people can hear me. I'm holding the button down. So next, we have the opportunity of our second public comment period of today's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and address the board for up to five minutes, an individual, 30 minutes maximum. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. We have Trish.
Trish, would you like to come up to the table and address us? Thank you.
Hi there. Thank you so much. My name is Trish Raby.
There you go.
Sorry about that. My name is Trish Raby. I'm with Raby Family Dentistry. I'm also here basically representing the businesses in the local area. And congratulations, Commissioner Rogers. That's a wonderful achievement. Way to go. Very happy for you. And thank you all for taking the time to listen to me today. The local businesses have gotten together lately. We have been affected by the decision of Washington County and the City of Hillsborough with the Project Homeless Connect decision. In the last three years, we have tried to be good neighbors with Project Homeless Connect, and it has not come to fruition. We come in on a daily basis to feces on our properties, trash everywhere. Our staff and our customers or patrons, patients in our example, do not feel safe. It has been very frustrating for the businesses involved, for our staffs, patients. We have been getting together, making plans with Mayor Pace, or, yeah, Mayor Pace now, sorry about that, Aaron MacGyver now, Sergeant. And yesterday, I met with Chief Coleman. The overdoses have gone up by 95% in the area. We are in the 95% hotspot, when it never used to be that way. We could leave our office and our doors open, and nothing would ever happen. Now the local offices are having taser lessons for their office staff. They have to wring their customers in. That never used to happen in Hillsborough. It was a very safe, almost Mayberry-ass town, and it's not that way anymore. Now they're thinking of building, well, you've approved. And in the work session meeting, Chair Harrington, you actually said that they're very much pushing for that to happen very soon. And it makes sense why it's been greenlighted so quickly to build this new structure. But when we do things in haste, we make big mistakes. And I urge you not to make a big mistake on this one. In three years, the crime has gone up 600%. Ask Chief Coleman. Ask Aaron MacGyver. Why are we not asking our auxiliary staff that has had to deal with the problems that are happening from this? There's no accountability through Project Homeless Connect that is, you know, taking care of this problem. They're bringing them in, but there's no governing of. There's no rules. There's no regulations. When we do something like this, there needs to be rules. There's got to be something to, you know, help those around you, help the people, help the officers, but there are no rules. And that trickle-down, talking to Chief Coleman, they are at max capacity right now. If we build that structure, they cannot, they cannot do anymore. They will be overextended. And it was fortunate to sit in that over budget everywhere, everywhere we are over budget, Washington County, City of Hillsborough, they don't have enough money to fund any other programs, nor keep the programs that we have going. I urge you to put a pause on this for your community, for everyone, to make hasty decisions. You know, get a risk management tool in there. Look at the trickle-down that this is going to cause. What effects are going to happen if we build it larger, if we go higher? How much can we do? Because we're not sustaining right now what's coming in. And if we go bigger, what's going to happen? And I urge you as a, you know, as a chair, as a commission, please look at this. I know you're getting pressure from above to make it happen, but take a step back, look at it, and look at the ramifications. Thank you for your time.
Comments with us.
That wishes to provide comment on this, open comment on any calendar-related topic, allow you to just raise your hand to get my attention. Not seen in the room. Would any member online wish to provide public comment on any calendar-related topic for up to five minutes? Please utilize the raise hand function. Not seen any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, I'll move to board announcements as I hold the mic down. This is our last meeting of this calendar year, 2024. So the next announcements are for our meetings that happen in the new year. On Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, we will start right here in the auditorium for the elected official swearing-in ceremony with Commissioner Nefisifi and Commissioner-elect Jason Snyder, for sure. After that, we'll convene as the Housing Authority Board of Directors by 10:00 a.m., followed immediately by our board meeting. Our work session that day will convene at 1:00 p.m. On Thursday, January 9th, we'll be holding a roundtable with a packed agenda. That meeting starts at 9:00. On Tuesday, January 14th, we'll have a work session all day starting at 9:00. On Thursday, January 16th, we will be having a supplemental roundtable starting at 9:00 a.m. On Tuesday, January 21st, we have a work session that starts at 9:00. We'll pause that and have our board meeting at 10:00, and then reconvene. Tuesday, January 28th, work session in the afternoon starting at 2:00, 1:00 if we need it, board meeting at 6:30 p.m. Then we're into the month of February. February 4th, work session at 9:00. Pause that. Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting at 10:00, followed by the board meeting. On Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, work session starts at 9:00. On Thursday, February 13th, 2025, we have a roundtable starting at 9:00. And that's all I've got for today. And I know we have a Clean Water Services Learning Day in the mix as well in early February, too. Did I miss any commissioners? Nope. I think I got enough of it for today. I don't know about you, but I'm not quite ready for the year 2025 yet. But it's coming whether I like it or not. So once again, Commissioner Rogers, congratulations to you for quite an impressive 40-year career as a Washington County Commissioner for District 3, as well as a Board of Director for Clean Water Services. We thank you. With that, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn this as the last board meeting for Commissioner Rogers.
I would be happy to do that.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Rogers, our longest-serving commissioner on this board, and seconded by Commissioner Nefisifi, our shortest-tenured mission member on this board thus far, and everything else in between. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously 5 to 0. We are hereby adjourned. And we will be reconvening in work session at 11:30. Thank you.